This is the Lisbon Board of Education, regular Board of Ed meeting. Welcome everybody who's here tonight with us. We'll all try to remember to use our microphones so you can hear us in the back. Call the order, everybody's here. We have a new member, Laura Sweet. She was elected in November, so she joins us as our eighth member, and we're going to fill our vacancy tonight also. So we've got some stuff to do there at roll call. Pledge allegiance, can we have one of our ambassadors lead us in the pledge? Thank you. All right, so, um, is Heidi here? Heidi Reposo? No?
Oh, oh, I didn't look, I'm sorry. Is Mrs. Reposo here?
She's not here. Damien's here.
Oh, I don't care whatsoever, whatever you want to do.
Sorry, you want to make a motion, Karen?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to move items four and five till after six public comment to give our constituents the ability to speak on items four and five if they so choose.
I'll second that. All's in favor? All discussion?
Oh, good. That's okay.
What do you want, what do you want to do?
He wants to do the S.
Oh, you want to do the awards first before the elections? Okay. All right, so make the motion. Wait a minute, we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, you guys still.
We have a motion on the floor.
So I will amend it and make my motion to move four and five until after the awards, the Sback Awards, which I think is 12A.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Let's make a motion to do the award, move the awards up and do them now.
Okay. I'll second that. Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, board time. Motion carried?
Good evening, everyone, welcome. So as you know, every year we take the Sback Assessment, and after going through the results, we look at those students that we want to highlight. We look at the growth, and then we also look at achievement. So I'm going to start with growth first. On behalf of the Lisbon Board of Education, we acknowledge Kaplan Dous. He's recognized for outstanding growth in ELA. As demonstrated on the 2025 ELA Assessment, Sback Assessment, Kaplan grew 192 points. Come on up. We'd like to acknowledge Brianna Larkin, recognized for outstanding growth in ELA. As demonstrated on the 2025 ELA Sback, Brianna grew 168 points. We'd like to acknowledge Eloise Krug for outstanding growth in ELA as presented on the 2025 ELA Sback. Eloise grew 164 points. We'd like to acknowledge Solange Vase for outstanding growth in math. He grew 134 points on the math. We'd like to acknowledge Mace Stodomingo for outstanding growth in math on the 2025 Math Sback. Mace grew 133 points. We'd like to acknowledge Anneliese Valverde for outstanding growth in math as shown on the 2025 Math Sback. Anneliese grew 128 points. The next three awards are going for achievement, and these are perfect scores on the Sback. We'd like to acknowledge Emma Kill-Collum for scoring a perfect score on the ELA Sback Assessment. We'd like to acknowledge Kristin Correa for outstanding performance on the ELA Assessment, scoring a perfect score. We'd like to acknowledge Luke Rankowitz for scoring a perfect score on the ELA Sback Assessment. I'm going to bring Luke back up. Recognizing Luke for a perfect score on the Math Sback Assessment. And like to acknowledge Sage Nowakowski for scoring a perfect score on the Math Sback Assessment. Congratulations to everybody, nice job.
Very good. Thanks, everybody, for coming. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, or if you want to go home and do homework, you can do that too.
Thank you for coming, though.
Thank you. All right, so we moved item 12A to before item four.
Yes.
So we're going to do item four now, filling the Board of Ed vacancy and possible action. So you guys have in your packets two letters, one from Mrs. Heidi Reposo and the other one from Damien Ricard. They're both interested in filling the vacancy on the Board of Ed to make us whole. Hopefully, you had all had a chance to read them, right? Anybody not have a chance to read them? All right, so for our bylaws, we need to vote on the two candidates and elect one of them to fill the chair. Yes?
I just have a couple of questions. First off, I think for either of you to be on the board would be outstanding. So thank you for applying. I just think that maybe we're premature and that we should table this because I don't know as of the town committee was notified.
Our bylaws don't say we have to notify. The only thing we have to do is notify the board.
No.
So last week, or last month, we notified the board that one of our members resigned.
Notified what board?
This board.
Yes.
We notified the board that one of our members resigned. And for our bylaws, any interested candidate sends a letter to the board, we review the letter, and we vote as a board to fill the vacancy.
I just, so was the entire town notified of the opening? I'm not sure how we got to this point because we've always notified the town committee prior to this one as a vacancy. And then we go to the community so everybody has a fair chance.
I don't believe that's part of the process. When I did it with Katie, we didn't do that. So I spoke to the town clerk multiple times about this, and she confirmed our plan, and this is what we plan on doing. So. I didn't speak to Susan Hall, she's the RTC Committee Chair.
And then when is the official date that Brandy actually resigned? Because she needed to resign to the town clerk, not to the Board of Education. No, I know she did, I'm asking the date. Because, again, I feel as though this is premature.
Yes.
Susan Hall? Hi.
So she's out of the RTC?
No, I know she is, but was the RTC notified officially? And I'm just asking to table it. Because I would like a notice to go out to the town, either through the school newsletter or Facebook or whatever. So if there's other people that are interested, they can apply as well.
Well, I don't think that would be fair to the candidates now. We told them what the process was going to be, they did what they were supposed to do, and they're here. I don't know, was the board here?
Are we okay? I think we're okay, as long as we're okay with it. Where it says some vacancies will be formally announced to the board at one of his regularly scheduled meetings. And I just want to make sure that there's not a conflict in what is considered formally announced. I know that the letter of resignation was read at the prior meeting. If that qualifies as formally announced, it does, then I think we're okay. If it doesn't, and it needed to be filed with the town clerk to be formally noted, then we wipe each other's eyes. That's all, it doesn't matter to me, I'm just saying, does it meet that criteria? If someone fed an idea to that.
And the superintendent stays out of this.
Yeah, so.
No, truly, we do.
Michelle said as long as I read the letter of resignation at the last month's meeting, that was a formal announcement, that doesn't seem. Anybody else got any issues with voting tonight?
No.
No? All right, so everybody has a ballot in front of them. It's got both candidates' names on them. Anybody have any questions for either candidate? So I just want to ask, so there's a new statute in the state of Connecticut that says that board members have to attain, obtain board training. So I want to make sure that both candidates are aware of that. And how long was the training, was it two days?
One eight-hour day.
One eight-hour day. Where was that?
Was far. Cheshire, maybe?
You don't remember? Yeah, so whoever gets elected, we'll get them the information. You do it through CAPE, it's actually pretty good training. They give you a lot of good material. It's paid for, so. All right, does anybody have any questions for either candidate? No? All right, so let's go ahead and vote, your ballots are right here. Okay, so we have seven votes and one abstention, and Heidi Reposo is the winner. Damien, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You come sit with us. Right, you can sit at the table, you can't vote till you're sworn in with the town.
It's our chair.
Yep, go ahead and see.
Yes.
You want to go? We can get that done.
Well, it's actually the board chair who would, with the board's input, ask if you want to say a few words.
Oh, yeah.
Would you like them, and Laura Sweet too, who's new? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where we should do that.
Oh, okay.
Right now.
Right now? All right, so we've done the, we filled the vacancy, and we have two new board members, Heidi Reposo and Laura Sweet. Would you guys like to say anything?
Thank you. So I'm Heidi Reposo, my husband is Humberto, and we've lived in Lisbon for 22 years. We have four children, of which three have already graduated from Lisbon, and then we have one who's an ambassador for the Board of Ed. So I'm very excited to be joining the board. This is new to me, I've never been on a committee, so it'll be interesting, and I'm looking forward to it. I'm very involved in my kids' education, very, not only academically in school, but also outside of school, and in clubs, and in sports, and also in music and drama. So that's just a little bit about me. And then I don't know everybody here, so I know some of you, but I don't know all of you. So, but I'm looking forward to getting to know all of you. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And my name is Laura Sweet, and I'm honored to join this wonderful board and hopefully be able to contribute to the fantastic work that you do. I am retired from law enforcement. I worked for the Medical Board of California for about 25 years, and so got to serve a pretty massive board and learned a lot in that regard. I moved to Lisbon about five years ago to support my family, and my nephew was born in March, who I originally thought was going to be part of the Lisbon system, but his parents have decided to move into a bigger house. But I'm just very excited to learn and contribute. I've managed the farmer's market, so I may have seen some of you there, and I love this town, I think it's phenomenal, and I've been really enjoying getting to get involved with it and just look forward to working with all of you.
Great, thank you. All right, for your benefit, so we have a nine-person board. We have four officers, we have a chair, vice chair, treasurer, and secretary. We have several subcommittees that we're going to stand up tonight. They're already standing, but we're going to change the people that are on them or keep the people that are on them, we're going to decide that tonight. We do that every November, right? Elections are every November. Let's see. Right now, we have four Republicans and five Democrats, right? Oh, you're unaffiliated, right? Heidi, unaffiliated, so we have three Republicans, one unaffiliated, and five Democrats, right? So, but you'll find that this board is very apolitical. It very, very rarely even comes up. I'm the conservative guy, but that's about it. Let's see, what else? We meet every third Wednesday of the month except for November, which we meet the fourth Wednesday of the, Monday of the month, I'm sorry, not Wednesday, fourth Monday of the month because of elections, all right? And we're going to change our time, so we usually meet at 6:30. We're going to try and meet at 6:00 for this year. We'll see how it works out. If we don't like it, we'll change it back. All right, is there anything else I should tell them? We good? All right. Okay, so we got to do officer selections. You've got ballots in front of you. Do we have any nominations? We're going to nominate a chair, a vice chair, a secretary, and a treasurer. Now, we lost Lauren Barr, she was our secretary, and we lost Brandy Larkin, she was our treasurer, so we have to fill those two spots. So for the treasurer, if you want to know what the responsibilities are, the treasurer is generally the chair of the finance subcommittee, which is a big responsibility on this board, doing annual budgets and contract negotiation things and things like that. Secretary, they take minutes of the meetings and things like that. The chair is, that's my job right now. And the vice chair is Katie's job right now. So we run the meeting. I talk to the superintendent about things that aren't general knowledge normally, but she has to keep the chair informed, so that relationship's a little different. But everybody else is pretty much the same. All right, so do we have a nomination for the chair?
I nominate Ian.
Any other nominations? Okay. Any other nominations? All right, I'm going to nominate Katie Aine for vice chair.
Don't leave over.
Oh. I thought we just go, we do the nominations.
Oh, okay, okay.
Unless you guys want to do them individually. Oh, because it could, yeah. All right, so we'll do that.
You are correct, yes.
All right, so we'll do that, so go ahead and vote for the chair.
Yeah, I'm coming, I'm on. Thank you, Kate.
Guess we could add the ambassadors.
We still can.
We could add the ambassadors. It's a tie? No, there is, so if, in the case, because we only have eight members, normally have nine, in the case of a tie, we have to vote again. And if we keep voting in a tie, then the board of selectmen has to pick one. So I have a feeling we're going to be in this. We have more papers?
Why don't you just cross them off and hand them out again?
Okay.
Why not?
We can use it back.
Whatever. Hang on, Kathy can do it.
Yeah, we've got 48 hours.
That's correct, you want some backup. So that you might want to clip as your first. Oh, you do? Yeah, if you could clip that, that way if you go to town, I'm just saying, you can give backup.
So then how do we vote for all the other Republicans?
I mean, I got a notebook.
Individual pieces of paper?
No, we can do it, don't worry. We're good. Not that tight, young.
In reading where it says, if. If a candidate chosen within one month, now selected, they'll choose their partner. So I guess my question is, the next general meeting, would be within a month? Would we be required and/or permitted, stay for a time, and evacuate it tonight?
Yeah.
If we have a seated ninth member next month, which would fall within 30 days, but relate this month to early December, would that supersede going to these selected after 30 days? I don't know if he answered that question.
You know, I'm sorry, I'm not recognized. We talked about that, but you said you checked, okay. We.
I checked.
He and I talked about this possibly happening, because that's a relationship I have with the board chair, and I told him I don't really regulate all that. And I said the best advice was to go downtown, to the town, and say, what's the story? Now, I don't know with regard to what you brought up. Because we didn't, well, maybe we did, did you ask that?
I read it, I read what we have to do in the case of a tie.
And who'd you talk, so who'd you talk to?
I didn't talk to Michelle, she wasn't in, she's out this week.
Oh. Oh.
To the meeting to swear the new person in to avoid a tie, like the tie. So, and she couldn't come.
So who did, who did anyone talk to?
I read it, says that if we don't, if we have an election and we don't have a majority, majority, it'd be a five-three or whatever, then we vote again. And we keep voting until we break the tie.
So I don't know if there was a question that actually went to the town because someone was out, for good reason, but was not there. So now I can't steer you win way or the other, I'm not supposed to.
No.
But.
I think we're just going to have to vote again.
Yeah, we'll vote again now and see what happens. But I think Dave is right. If we're a stalemate tonight, then we just wait because then we'll be nine people, and it won't be a tie.
If we wait, we're going to have to wait for all four officers because, like Dave said.
Well, I think you are going to have to wait.
Well, I think that's.
For all four, to be honest with you.
Can we write round two?
Yeah, put something, well, you're going to clip it, so I would put one on that one.
And then two. Why do I rush?
Actually, the board could vote on, make a vote.
Make a vote on one.
Put a motion on the board.
You should see what happens.
Yeah, see what happens this time, how do we know?
Make a motion that you want to table until next month?
Yes.
Yes, that's what they're talking about. I can hear them, they're looking at me.
Yeah. If it happens again, then we'll have to table it.
And then table all four because what Dave said is right, that part I do know. And then table all four, because what Dave said is right, that part I do know. That's different, correct. You'd have to send it to Tommy. Yeah. Well, that, that's what I think, I'm not really supposed to be waiting. But.
So what we got? One, two, three. Four and three. So Judy's the new chair. We had one abstention.
Oh, I was gonna say, oh, that's what happened, yeah, an abstention.
Alright, so, uh, now we gotta vote for a vice chair, I'm gonna nominate, uh, Katie Vane.
Yes, sure. So what was the number?
Four for Judy, three for Ian, and one abstention.
Oh, okay. I, I'm correct. Wow, okay.
Four, three, one abstention.
Do we have any other, uh, nominations for chick, vice chair?
So Judy's nominated.
I already nominated Katie.
Oh, you're asking me like, do I have any?
Alright, so Ian Rogers, Katie. Oh, that's it.
That's it, no other nominations? Alright, so, you know, you need to vote, right? Katie's vice. I'm not a chair. Nobody nominated me.
Oh. I nominate Ian.
Oh, oh, okay.
Sorry.
Well, now you do take a vote.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, dummy, okay.
Could've been so easy to, now you gotta get up and down.
Need some steps.
Maybe gingerbread cookies, Sean?
Do you want one?
No. Who made those, Mike?
Yeah, Mike did it. Just good, I hope. Tell me something good.
Okay.
Katie wins.
I win, so there was, uh, one, two, three, four, five, Katie's and two Inns.
Okay, good. Alright, so, the next one is treasurer. What?
No abstention.
No abstention. No.
Well, that's what I thought. Did I say that?
No, but it should be. Something's wrong.
That's probably my counting something.
Oh, okay, that's why. No, I was, yeah, I'm counting that.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Who didn't vote? Vice chair.
Oh, me. Sorry. It was mine, it was me. It was.
This whole, this whole thing is a surprise.
I was hitting here on my.
Alright, five.
So it's one, two, three, four, five to three.
Okay.
Sorry about that, geez.
Alright, so the next, uh, the next officer we have is treasurer. I'm gonna, I'm going to nominate myself.
Yes.
And I'm gonna say why.
Okay.
Because the treasurer is, uh, chairman of the finance subcommittee, which I already am. And they also have to sign all the checks, so somebody has to be cleared through Diamond Bank, which I already am. So, since I'm no longer the board chair, I'll do the chair. If you guys want me to.
I'm gonna nominate Laura.
Okay.
Laura, sweet, okay, hang on. Yep. Okay.
Mine's in here.
Uh-huh.
Alright, so we have, uh.
Seven.
Seven Inns, one Laura.
Okay.
Alright, the last one is secretary, so secretary was vacated when Laura, Lauren Barr's, uh, term expired. We need a secretary. Uh, anybody wanna nominate somebody?
I'll nominate Jenny.
Jenny?
Um, I'll nominate Karen.
Karen? So Jen, Jenny, right? Five, 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 three, five, three?
Yes, Jenny, five, three.
Alright, so for the new folks, uh, we do this every November, so these, these officers are only in their seats for a year, and, um, you know, if you decide you wanna be an officer, you nominate yourself at some point, uh, where you can be dominated. Try it out. Alright, so that's done, elections are done. Uh, we got any, um, public comment? No public comment? Alright, correspondents to the board of ed, I have none. Uh, oh, Judy, do you wanna sit here, do you wanna do this, you're the new chair? Alright, whatever. I'll finish that.
Okay.
Alright, Lisbon, uh, Central School Student Ambassadors. Sorry to make you wait.
Good evening, I'm Natalie Vane, your eighth grade student ambassador. Tonight, I'll be sharing what I've been working on in the past couple of weeks. In ELA, I've been working on I E Bs. In Spanish, we're learning about the countries, national animals. In social studies, we've been learning about South America. And in science, today we had to turn in our bridge projects while we're working and learning about friction. In math, we just finished a test on equations. Thank you for listening, have a great Thanksgiving break. Oh, I forgot, I have to read Lexi's, cause she had to leave. Um, Lexi's your seventh grade student ambassador. She said, in math, we're learning about multiple step equations with variables. In science, we're learning about the periodic table, and protons, and neutrons, and electrons. In social studies, we're learning about the Mexico map. And we are learning, and we are writing a paragraph on an animal that you can choose that lives in Mex- Mexico. And lastly, in Spanish, we are learning about colors and clothing. And lastly, in basketball, we have our first game in two weeks on Monday. Thank you for listening, have a great night.
Hi, my name is Laura Reposo. Hi, my name is Laura Reposo, and I'm a sixth grader here at LCS. Here's what sixth graders are learning in our classes. In language arts, we are reading a mystery, and we are reading the book holes. In social studies, my grade is learning about ancient Egypt. In science, we're learning about body systems. In math, our class is learning about unit rates and ratios.
Alright, very good, thank you. Alright, uh, we gotta move on to approval of minutes from the October twentieth, uh, board of ed meeting, anybody have any issues with them? If not, I need a motion to approve the regular bit, Board of Education minutes from Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Jill motions, Karen seconds, any discussion? All's in favor? Hoes? Alright, motion carries. Alright, administrators reports, Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to do the students of the month, congratulations to October students of the month, Tegan Davis, Gemma Chaloner, Cal- Callan Rothmeyer, Dominic Locas, Blake Boshie, Aiston Fontaine, Madison Eiloff, Mackenzie Dunstford, and Hannah Pollock. Nice job to these students, for exemplifying the core values of cougar pride, respect, responsibility, safety, and trustworthiness. Next, just wanna give you update on the clubs. As mentioned back in September, uh, wrote a grant for, um, some after-school clubs. Um, there was criteria to the, to the grant, it has to be, uh, for drug prevention. Um, but we could do S E L, uh, as well as leadership. So, we did take that route. Um, we have currently six clubs running. Um, there's not as big of response, we have about forty-four kids who signed up, but that's forty-four kids who are enjoying some clubs after school. So, uh, we're excited to have them. Um, one of the, the, one thing to note, uh, our kindness crew under Elise, Alyssa Fabry did the food drive. Um, an extraordinary amount of support from the Lisbon community. Uh, room thirty-six, we couldn't do our, our, uh, policy meeting today, cause it's just full of food. So, we're gonna have a distribution tomorrow from six thirty to eight o'clock in room thirty-six, as well as Wednesday from one thirty to four, for anyone in Lisbon community, um, who needs any, um, any food. So, uh, we're excited to offer that opportunity to our, our Lisbon residents. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Sheldon? No?
Alright, Mr. Burke, good evening, everybody. Um, over the course of the last month, in the special ed world, we, uh, found, uh, one student eligible for special education services, uh, but we also found three students, um, no longer eligible for special ed. Um, so that brings our numbers down at Lisbon Central, um, down two from ninety-five to ninety-three. Um, out of district numbers remain at twenty-nine, giving us a grand total of a hundred and twenty-two total students. And that's all I have.
Any questions, Mr. Burke?
When you say not eligible, can you just clarify what that means?
Yeah, so, um, the students either were, um, had their three-year reevaluation process, and, um, the testing, um, either resulted in, um, uh, them not needing any more services, or the data showing that they no longer remained eligible for special education services. Um, and, and these particular cases, I believe two, um, had come up on their, um, three-year reeval. Um, so through the testing process, they tested out, if you will.
That's awesome, I just wanted that on record, so that people understood why they weren't eligible.
Yeah, excellent, thank you.
That's great.
Was that it? I thought you were gonna talk about this, uh, right?
Uh, I am.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and then, you'll see why.
Alright. On to, uh, Mr. Fairhams.
Hi, everyone. Um, this month, we had the, uh, the auditors from King, King were doing their in-person audit, uh, with us on the fifth. Uh, it went well, they were doing a little more work with the town, and once they were done with the town, they were gonna get back to us with kind of the final steps to finish the audit. Um, but it did go well. Um, once they finished that audit with us, they started the E F S in, uh, agreed upon procedures audit. Um, so I'm working with them now to complete that audit of our E F S from this past year. Um, so working with that and getting that one done. Uh, we are very busy in the business department, getting the budget ready. Uh, we have fourteen funds that make up our budget. Of those fourteen, five are done, and the remaining nine are very, very close to being done. Um, which I hope to get Sally, uh, very early next week. And I just do wanna thank the whole administrative team and the department heads, uh, Mike and Teresa Aren here, and, um, Linda and Kathy as well, everyone, takes the team to put the, the budget together, so thank you all for your hard work.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Spirit?
Great, Mr. Glue, howdy. So, last Wednesday, Sally and I attended the board of finance meeting at the town hall, see if they could help cover some of the cost of this replacement hot water heater in the lower boiler room. The estimates, excuse me, the estimates were set to wane before the meeting, they ranged from forty-nine thousand to just under thirty thousand. When we asked which, when I was asked which one we'd go with, I chose the least expensive one. Uh, the higher-priced units sounded great, but unfortunately, there was just, the payback wasn't there. Um, and to break into, they wanted to break into the existing heating system to try to make this work, which isn't something we wanna do in the winter months coming up. So, we chose to go with the lesser of the units, uh, which came in at twenty-nine thousand, eight fifty. Um, Tom Sparkman suggested, because of the quarter the town has of twenty thousand, that, uh, we asked for nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars from the board of finance. Uh, they did approve that, and he recommended that we transfer, uh, do a line-eyed transfer to cover the remainder of ten thousand, two hundred, which I believe Jonathan was able to come up with. So, P O's have been cut for this project, and we're just waiting for it to arrive.
That's it.
Yep.
Any questions? Very good. Alright, thank you. Uh, last, but not least, Ms. Keen.
Thank you. Uh, the building committee, uh, met last week for the update of the science lab. Uh, Brian, Jonathan, and I attended with, uh, Marty, Marty Malenick. Um, it was a great meeting, we got to meet everybody. Uh, David Wood, who's a parent here for LCS, was voted the chair. He did a great job, it was his first time, and he, he did a great job. Mike Zalaski took on the secretarial role. Um, no one really wanted it, and he said, I'll do it. Um, we discussed our vision, uh, for the lab update, which you all received maybe two or three weeks ago in the board of ed newsletter. Uh, Marty took, he did a great job explaining everything, people were happy. Um, the next agenda, Marty is going to draw up plans with the help of, I think, Ray Jolly, um, to supply drawings of his vision, they want drawings, and, um, Marty said he'd do it. Timelife for, uh, completion is this summer. Uh, the next meeting is December ninth at seven o'clock. It's going to be in the lab, but once work starts up and it gets close to things, you know, getting in the way, we will then go to room thirty-six. Um, Brian and Marty are the ones that are going to attend on behalf of the board. Uh, we're very excited. A board, the board chair, a board member is required, but you can do like I do, I'm gonna go in and out when they want me, and you might wanna discuss that later, sorry, under the committees. Regional Early Childhood Co- uh, Collaborative, you know it as the L G group, uh, local governance, is now called Regional Early Childhood Collaborative. I attended the last meeting, um, superintendents were to pick one. Uh, the last four to go to, I picked this one, it happened to be the community table one, which I didn't know, and that was great. Uh, the others were more meet and greets. Uh, so I went with that Kelly Middle School in Norwich. One of the pertinent points that was, uh, discussed, that was on the agenda, was about parent involvement. So, parent ambassadors are going to be a part of this program. Um, it's going to come out of the grant, the money, for the stipends for these people, and supposedly, we're trying to work on one for each district. So, Lisbon will ha- supposedly have one. Um, they're key people, they reach out to the community on early childhood issues and events. Again, they, they receive stipends. I did ask how they get picked, there is going to be an application process coming out. Um, and we'll make sure that our parents know about it. Um, in terms of community table, however, anyone can go, and they want more parents at that table. So, uh, Dan, uh, did a great job of getting, uh, that out on the website, uh, in terms of, we need some participation. And Christopher and I put it in the board of, uh, sorry, not the board newsletter, the parent newsletter, saying that we want, um, want some more people to do that, we're hoping to get people. It's very important to get them to that table, because a lot of decisions are going to be made at that table. And we want Lisbon represented. Um, what else? Oh, the next meeting is December third, it's at nine thirty, and it's at Otis Library. It's a virtual, it's virtual or in-person. Uh, now, they really do not want superintendents going, they feel we, and I don't blame them, they feel we will overwhelm. Uh, now, they really do not want superintendents going. They feel we, and I don't blame them. They feel we will overwhelm some of the conversation. Um, what they want or who they want is someone, um, very much tied to early childhood in our district, which is Dan. Dan is our early childhood coordinator, so he'll be taking it over. So he will be the consistent one going to these meetings. I don't know what else can I tell you. I think that's pretty much it. Um, pre-K crosswalk, I just want you to know that Brian and I heard from Tommy Sparkman on a phone call. He is still in the works. They are going to do the pre-K crosswalk. Um, it, that's all I can tell you right now. I don't think we have a date yet, right, Brian? But it's gonna be in the near future, so I wanted, and we need to thank Tommy and, and his crew to do. We're very happy. And that's it.
Sure.
I just had a question. I saw that it went out in the newsletter for the parents. Has anybody shown interest in that?
Yeah, I, um, I received an email on Friday from, um, a parent in the community that actually works for the O E C. And she, um, and I told her all about the, uh, meetings and that she should show up as, to the community table, so.
That's great. Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, we're on to the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the monthly expenditures for October twenty twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, in the amount of one million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-five cents.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So Katie and Jenny?
Yep.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we need a motion to approve the financial statement for October twenty twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, as presented by the administration.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Katie and Jenny again? Uh, any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, on to new business. S-BAC, we did?
Yeah.
Incentives, we did, right? No, we didn't do incentives.
Uh, Chris, if you want to just make a few comments?
Sure. So I reached out to, um, area schools to see what they did prior to S-BAC testing, um, and also ask any incentives, uh, for what they do on the S-BAC. Um, I did get a response back that said that they did do an assembly. They tried an assembly last year, but it didn't quite go the way that they had wanted it to. Uh, they're gonna try some tweaks this year. So one school did an assembly. Another school, in terms of incentives, what they did was a breakfast, um, in September after the results were, um, made public. And any, any student that received a three or a four, they had their parents come for a breakfast. So it was over several days, but they acknowledged the students with the certificate, and, um, their parents were invited to breakfast. And so that's what I had. I did speak to, um, Brian, just to see what was done in the, in the past. Uh, he had, Brian Apperson. And he had mentioned that what they tried is they tried, uh, going outside prior to S-BAC testing, um, and going for a walk. You know, and apparently it was enjoyable for the whole school, because I guess the whole school went out there and, and walked the track. So, um, it's just one thing that we thought about, that, that might be something good to do, is get some fresh air on those testing days. But we're still trying to think and problem solve what we can do for incentives for the kids.
Good. Question. So does the rest of the students know that some, some of these guys scored a perfect score on their S-BAC?
Will be, um, at the community meeting, which will be coming on, uh, the nineteenth, I believe. It'll, they'll be acknowledged in front of the, the school. Yep.
Good, because that might inspire some other guys to try a little harder. Anybody else got any questions? Thank you. All right, uh, committee list of appointments and possible actions. So we have a list of our current subcommittees. These are our standing committees. Does Laura and Heidi, do you have this?
Yes.
You do? Okay, good. All right, good. So, um, you'll see up at the, uh, the finance committee has Lauren Barr and Brady Larkin on it. Both those two are no longer on the board, so, uh, finance subcommittee is pretty important. We need to make sure that's full. Anybody want to join the finance subcommittee? Laura?
Okay.
Anybody else? Is your name E E T or E A? E E? Thanks. So we got Laura, and Judy will be ex officio. I'll be on there, and Katie, you're still on there, right?
Yep.
All right, anybody else?
Karen?
Karen, you want to be on? Uh, we had?
Randy's spot.
We have Randy's spot, Billy, huh? It's a, you know, you're busy. Don't feel bad if you can't do it. So let me tell you something.
You learn a lot. You learn a lot.
Let me tell you something. Between, between December and March, it's a busy, that's a busy subcommittee, so. Think hard before you sign up.
It's a lot, like policy.
Usually between four and six, somewhere in there, and sometimes they go long, so. And don't feel bad if you don't want to do it. I already know. Yeah?
Oh, there's no penalty if you don't show up, except for my personal penalty to you.
All right, I'm gonna put, so you're on right here. Okay.
All right, hot lunch subcommittee, I don't think, I don't know if they've ever met. Um, that's a committee. Anybody want on or off that committee? Right now, it's Judy, Joe, myself, and Katie.
Yeah, I don't think I, we ever met.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever met.
Well, we have.
We did back when we really did have chairs.
I mean, the lunch prices or something goes up. Do you want to go to this committee or just the board?
No.
Yeah.
Well, that, so you want to keep it then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would too. I just said that. And who's up? The same people?
Yeah.
Anyone want to join it?
Okay.
Awards committee, uh, right now, we have Karen, Judy, Joe, myself, because I was the chair, so it'll be Judy and, uh, Katie. I don't think that's ever met either. I've never met.
We did a few, yeah, we did before.
We did?
We did, yes.
That was the awards committee we did?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've, they've met for a few years. Yeah.
Okay, I never went.
So we keep, because you were ex officio.
I'm off.
You're off?
Yeah, I'm off.
You can take me off the hot lunch one, too.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, negotiation committee. So the negotiation committee does, we have two unions in this school. We have the L E A, we have the M U I. Uh, the L E A contract is every three years. The M U I is every five years. We renegotiate their contracts. It's a pretty arduous process. Negotiation meeting, committee meets a lot, um, during that process. We also, uh, renegotiate bus contracts. Uh, this year, we're gonna be doing, uh, I T contracts, so those negotiation committees, um, are fairly busy. So right now, Jenny, Judy, uh, Brandy's gone. Uh, I'm still on it. I want to be on it.
Yeah.
And Katie Vane is on it. Anybody want on or off? You good? All right, executive board, I don't think that exists anymore, does it?
No, it is.
Well, it's, it's the office. Yes, the whole. So Kathy will do that.
Well, you can take me off. All right, I guess I gotta be on. Nah, I'll be on. Yeah.
Is he treasurer? Oh, yeah.
All right, policy, policy revision. Karen, you want off? We're not gonna let you.
Yeah.
But I don't get an option?
Yeah, no. Yeah, we definitely need one more person. So this?
Hello, Dave?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect choice. Heidi? I'm not so sure you know what you signed up for.
Yes, she did. She did. She did.
No, I'm getting off.
Ian, you're off, probably?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So here's the deal with policy. So for the last two years, we've been transitioning from a cave policy set. So Cave provided us all the policies. We refined them to meet our needs, and that was our bank of policies. Couple of years ago, we decided that we were gonna use Shipment at Goodwin, which, which is our board attorney and their firm. They do their own set of policies, and we're, we're in transition, right? So we're switching from Cave to Shipment at Goodwin, and it's, uh, a lot of work.
Or not necessary.
Yeah, and some.
Sometimes we keep caves.
Sometimes they keep cave.
Yeah, I, I think I've got.
But I just want to let you know what you're getting into.
It's just revamping all the policies, pretty much, like it, making sure they're up to date, accurate. Oh, Barry.
It's a lot of work.
You got this, Heidi. You got this.
All right, building and grounds, uh, we have. Oh, so you already have, uh, let's see, you have three. Plus you, you're the ex officio.
And how many times did you come, Ian?
Zero.
So that's why Judy's saying, does anybody else want to come?
Maybe she likes policy. I don't.
Is that a no?
Hey. I'm happy that we haven't Heidi and Judy. That's great. A nice addition. Besides just being careful. Well, I didn't let him off the hook. I was just being realistic, but.
All right, can we move on?
Yeah, okay.
All right, building and grounds, we have Jenny, Joe, uh, myself. I was on there as ex officio. I'll stay on there as just a normal member. And Katie. Anybody want on or off?
Judy's gonna be ex officio.
Judy's gonna be ex officio. And technology committee. Uh, so right now, we have Lauren, Jenny, Dave, and myself as ex officio. I'll stay on there as a regular member. Um, so we just went out for R F P on our I T stuff, right? So, uh, Novus, who's our incumbent, um, the board decided that we wanted to go out and send an R F P out. We got, what, four responses, five responses? They were open, uh, the week before last. So the technology committee's gotta sit down in the near future and review those.
Who are we thinking of?
And, um, and we have to, uh, give a recommendation to which one we're gonna hire. So I guess a couple of them are pretty far out, and, uh, a couple of them are close, so. We'll have to sit down and look at that. So anybody want on or off that technology subcommittee? No? All right, good.
Yeah, because Lauren's not on.
Right.
There's only three of you.
There's three of us. Jenny, Dave, myself.
Well, she's on everything.
She's on everything. Judy's on everything.
Oh.
You want to do it, Laura?
We'll put you down. Well, you don't really.
You don't really count.
You don't really.
No, Lauren's gone.
Why six? Oh, okay, all right.
All right, so this is what we have. All right, so, uh, our, uh, standing committees, chairman is, is gonna be Judy. Uh, vice chair, Katie. Secretary is, uh, uh, Karen.
No, it's Jenny.
I'm sorry, Jenny. I'm sorry, Jenny. And, uh, treasurer is me. All right? Finance subcommittee, we have Laura Sweet, uh, Judy Jenks, Karen, uh, myself, and Katie. All right? Hot lunch committee, uh, Judy, well Judy's on everyone. So Judy, Joe, and Katie. Awards committee, Karen, Judy, Joe, and Katie. Uh, negotiations committee, Jenny, Judy, myself, and Katie. Executive board, uh, long, I'm sorry. Executive board is gonna be Judy, Katie, uh, myself, and Jenny. And policy revision is Karen, Heidi, and Katie.
Well.
And Judy. Judy's on all. She's implied. Uh, building and grounds, Jenny, Joe, myself, Katie, and Judy. And technology, Jenny, Dave, myself, Laura, and Judy. All right, any other last minute changes? We want to change anything? You good? All right, so that's our standing committees for twenty-five, twenty-six. All right, let's move on. Uh, twenty-twenty-six scheduled board meetings, possible action. Everybody has a list in front of them? Anybody see any conflicts with any of those dates? I looked today. I didn't see any, except I don't want the July meeting, but.
And just so you know, may I speak?
Yeah.
Ian, that, um, the board voted last time to change it for December, but what we found out, uh, Kathy went down to the town. And if you do that, you would have to have a special meeting. You'd have to cancel this twelve-twenty-one and then have a special meeting. So Kathy left it. Even though last time you voted, or everyone voted to have December start at six, it's in the minutes. Are you following me? Okay, so. So we'll, we'll just go with December being six-thirty. I mean, I'm assuming, right? I just want to make sure the board knows that.
Yeah, next month. Yeah, so this starts in January. This December is for next, next December.
Right, but, okay, but the board voted that December you were gonna start. It's in the, at six. And I'm just trying to clarify that we're not doing it, right?
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna start this new six o'clock thing in January.
Yeah, okay, okay.
All right.
Thanks, Cal, for checking it out.
So everybody good with these dates? So, uh, do we want to have a July meeting or?
Oh, that's up to the board. Historically, we've always left it, and then we just postpone it if we decide that we don't want to have it, but we always keep it on the books.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, so we need to, uh, need a motion, right, to approve these?
Yep.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Good.
Beautiful.
All right, uh, what about treasurer's position that's been resolved, right?
Yeah, unless you want to get also an alternate, because we ran into it a couple of times this year.
Is anybody else on the board that can sign checks already, Kathy?
I don't believe so. I don't believe already, but we just have to get them. That the bank can honest.
You gonna do it?
Well, that's what we're saying. Right now, it's just one person. Myself, I've been up on the board, but I mean, the, the chairman.
So I'll be the chair.
Oh, so you're, you're willing to do it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's typically.
Yeah, you're already cleared two-time bank anyway, right?
Oh, I don't even remember now. I think they take your name long.
And I think a lot when I left, um, the, uh, since.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. I know what you mean, saying that when you did.
Was that after they lost our money?
Jeez. Okay, scratch.
All right.
So we're okay now? All right, we're good now?
All right, item F, acceptance of an approval, an approval of employee resignation. So I have to read this.
Yep.
It's from Elizabeth Sankow, uh, to Sally Keating. I'm writing, "Formerly resigned my position at Lisbon Central School, effective immediately. I appreciate the opportunities I have had and everything I have learned during my time here, but I recognize that it is not a good fit for me despite my efforts. Sincerely, Elizabeth Sankow." So I need a motion to, uh, accept her resignation with regrets.
I have a question.
Yes.
So was she given a exit interview?
That's in the separation package. So she's been given it.
And she completed it, and it's been returned?
It's on the first.
No.
Okay. So she didn't complete it and send it back?
Not to me. Usually it comes to me, but I'm not in anything.
But she just, we just gave it to her when, Thursday, so she's got time.
Any other questions? All right, so we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I, yeah.
Katie motioned.
No, Judy made the motion.
Judy motioned. Katie seconded, I'm sorry.
Oh, 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 okay. Gotcha.
All right, uh, All right, item G, Tutors, for support in sixth grade.
All right, so thanks for the supportive decision by the board and the C grant from the state. We have sports staff in place in sixth grade. Um, the feedback that I've been receiving from the general ed teachers is that they're extremely pleased with how things are going. And, um, yeah, I mean, it, it really is, in its, you know, early phases, but they, uh, they are in place and doing very, very well, so. And the kids are really getting what they need. So thank you again.
So I have a question.
Okay.
So this is fifth grade, right?
No.
Sixth grade, yep.
So when they, when these kids go into seventh grade, we're gonna have the same issue? Class size is gonna be larger?
It could be, yeah.
My question is, are the tutors gonna have to follow these class?
Yeah, that's the idea, right now. I think, um, when it comes to the planning phases, we will make sure that that is accounted for.
So we need the budget for next year.
Well, the C grant is supposed to come through until the year.
Yeah, it's a yearly grant, so...
Maybe for eighth grade, but right now, the C grant is supposed to be two years. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions? Good? All right, Karen, policy.
Yeah, so, um, the Shipment at Goodwin policy, Series 5000 concerning sunscreen application in school, it was really very vague, um, so we compared it to the current policy, and the general consensus was to just combine them into one policy. That's pretty self-explanatory.
All the things involved.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. Read it, fascinating, we have to have a policy for sunscreen, but whatever. All right, so, uh, we need a motion to, uh, we have first read on policy, Series 5000, policy concerning sunscreen application in school. Karen made the motion, Jenny seconded. Any discussion? All right, I need a motion to approve, uh, Series 5000, policy concerning sunscreen application in school. Karen?
I'll second.
Jenny? Uh, any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. See how easy that policy stuff is, Heidi? There you go.
Don't ask how long it took to get there.
And I thank you. I, I just have to go on record for the community, um, I mean, we've always had good policy. Karen Barber is doing a very good job of policy. I, and it is tough. And I'll tell you, you always come prepared, you got your que, I want to thank you.
We thank you, Karen. Even though I tease you, I know what the job is, and I don't... I don't envy you a bit.
And she hangs in there.
Yeah?
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay. So, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to move item I to after item sixteen?
Yep.
Second.
Jenny seconds, all's in favor? Opposed? All right, Committee Reports. Uh, I was supposed to say something on Committee Reports.
Well, one was about the RFP.
Yeah, yeah, I already talked about that.
But you already did that.
Yeah.
And what about...
We're just gonna try to get something on the schedule by next week, but, because it is needed a lot.
Is it next week?
Well, no, I mean, the...
Yeah. So the Technology Committee, we're gonna meet sometime between now and next week?
Yeah, I, I have them all ready.
So how about, uh, sounds good for you?
Four more times, too.
Yeah, what time are you looking at?
I can be available anytime after three.
Yeah, what time?
Oh, you're five?
Uh, the third is a Wednesday.
What, what's good for you?
I, I can be, probably be by four thirty, so I can be here by five?
Five works for me, I can be here.
On Wednesday? Okay. Yeah, that's good. Is it good, as long as?
No, that, that works.
Oh, that's beautiful. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You're gonna send, send me, send me an email. Oh, it's, uh, the...
Ian, Laura, Heidi, Dave.
Because I do have them all electronic, and I couldn't see them.
Oh, you can send them?
I can send them all.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't have to send them to me, stop looking at me, I'm not on that committee.
About the building committee, that was the second one.
Yeah, so, um, the Building Committee, like we discussed earlier, for the science lab, uh, that's, it's pretty much a town committee for you, Heidi and Laura. Last fall, the town voted to appropriate, uh, some funds, I think it was a total of, two ninety-something, whatever, two seventy-something, two hundred and seventy-something thousand out of town funds to redo our science lab. So they stood up a Building Committee. Uh, we solicited community for people who are interested in, I'll be on the committee. Uh, they have, they have a Standing Committee now. We can have a board member on that committee if anybody wants to volunteer to do that. You want to do it? You want to do it? All right. Well, I think they're max, when'd they say their next meeting was, the ninth?
I wrote it down.
Yeah.
Yeah. So just go.
Yeah, I wrote it down.
I don't think you can vote.
Because I thought you told me I was on it.
You can't vote. So like Brian goes, and, um...
Marty.
Marty goes, and you can go, but I don't think you can vote, just that people are on the...
No, yes, right. You are right.
Yeah, we are supposed to have...
We don't have to.
It's not required, but they, they would like it. A couple of them would like it.
Would look better if we did.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. I agree. I think Kate's right.
I think she's right, too.
Okay.
It doesn't match.
All right, any additions to this agenda? Anybody want to talk about anything else tonight? Yep, you have to talk, Dave.
Yep, we did. Well, it went well. Um, it was, uh, Christopher and I, and we met with, um, Kate and Todd, our fifth grade teachers, and we talked about how the board, we discussed the departmentalization. Um, and actually, they thought it was a good idea. Um, what they are going to do, visit other schools if they want to, but in the meantime, Christopher's getting in schedules from the other schools, because why go down if you already know you don't like the schedule for that? And Christopher's in the midst of doing that. I don't know, they seemed excited, I have to say. They, they're great people. They've been through this once before. Um, what else can we tell them? They're hoping that it makes a difference. They do want to look at different models. Um, I said we couldn't, both Christopher and I said, we couldn't guarantee them exactly what they want, but they can be creative, if they come back with a model that will work, we'll bring it to the board. They do know that, we're gonna bring it back to you, all of you, and then go from there. But they're, they're on board with it.
The only input is, we talked about this, whether or not, if we're looking at whether they're doing level instruction?
Yeah.
At superior level?
Yep.
And only I would say also, then, like, on the scheduling, if we have the math people, they go to seventh next year, or the seventh grade, if we do have math, get your math help.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, I know where you are.
I would say, maybe if the schedule isn't such that, that at the same time, third grade same day, if you have a math person, they might be able to assist at that level, which would be a... Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think Kelly talked to you.
I said it's so...
Am I right? Yeah.
The seventh next year is the level that is needed because of the numbers. Maybe fifty-seven are at the same time.
I'll tell you, they're hardworking teachers. Like, when we did the first, remember that one year we did the pilot the first time? They, they put their all into it. So there's nothing, their motivation's there. And they were up against some challenges, to be honest with you. And I don't know if I said this last time, but, um, well, of course, the large class size, don't get me wrong. Uh, also the number of kids with needs. And also, um, the special ed teacher that was working with them had to go out for a very good reason. I, I can't get into specifics, kind of, you know, perp and hip and all that. But, so, and that was what, February or March? So they, they were up against some stuff, and we tried to get a fill-in, which it's very difficult, I'm telling you now, to get a special educator. I have, I have my su, colleagues call, call me, and they'll say, Sal, you know, what, do you know anyone, because I'm in that field? I go, no, there's no one out there. Uh, it's very, very difficult. So they were up against some stuff. But anyway, they're very excited, and they're the right duo to do it. They, they work hard, they're good, good teachers. That's all I want to say. I think I went too far. Okay? So let's get going, I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
So back to committees. I did want, Judy, we need to, um, one final piece of the playground equipment. The playground equipment has been delivered. All is well, right, Brian? It's there, it's in the town garage back here. We just need to, um, figure out installation. So we have to decide on that, so... Yes. Yes. And the swings from the rec committee have also been, they're there. So it's all... Yes, we have that, yep.
Well, that's great.
We just need, and...
Sure.
Yeah, it's there.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, that's great, Brian.
All right, any other additions to this agenda? Good? Next month's agenda, what we gotta do? No, the board votes.
So it's gotta come back to you.
It's gotta come back to you.
Okay.
And there's more policy.
Yeah, we definitely want to put that on the agenda, the RFP, and, uh, policy next month.
And Duchamp. Are you writing it down first, Judy?
Well, I am.
Is there anything else? Anything else for next month's agenda? All right, public comment, do we have any public comment? No? Thanks for coming. All right, uh, so our next step, we're gonna go into Executive Session.
Yes, I just need to make one comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Remember, um, we talked, is this okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, um, so, so because of some things just happening in the state of Connecticut, um, with, with some, um, superintendents, um, I gotta be careful with all this, because I don't want to hurt my colleagues. Um, but, but we, as superintendents, have been encouraged to let the community know, as well as all of you, about our certification status. So, I know, do you know what I'm, yeah, okay. Yes, but don't, yeah, I don't want to say it, yeah. Anyway, that's one of them, and there's a big case going on.